...the Monday, August 2, 2021. I believe you've all received the modified posted meeting agenda. And I think it stands. I don't see any changes on it. We're going to be dealing with some continuations tonight. But the agenda will stand as circulated. I believe you've all received the meeting notes from Jim. Any questions about those? Can I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes as a meeting notice submitted?
Submitted.
I have a motion by Kathy, second by Delise. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Okay. You've also had a chance to review the minutes of the July 19 meeting. Any comments, corrections, edits? Hearing none, can I have a motion to prove them as received?
So moved.
Moved by Michael, second Delise. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Correspondence and announcements. You may recall that at our, I believe it was our last meeting, there was some discussion about the date of the September meeting. It would normally be on September 6th, Monday, which is Labor Day. And we would then normally have postponed it until the 7th. There was a request at the last meeting from people interested in the Rockledge application in postponing that another day to the 8th based on the fact that Monday, Tuesday is Rosh Hashanah. Since that time, we've received a letter from the Rockledge team requesting that their application be continued until October 4th. So that will not require us to move to Wednesday. So we've conferred with the office and the official date of the September meeting will be the 7th at the regular time of 6:30. Kathy, I think you have something you want to discuss with the board regarding meetings?
I have a suggestion to make. The town board starts their meetings at 6 o'clock, which enables us to get out a bit earlier in the evening if we were to adopt that. And so I wanted to suggest that for consideration that we begin when we can, which would be next year. To me, particularly in the winter months, if we could start at 6, I think is a good idea.
We wanted to get a sense from the board whether that was acceptable to you or whether it was in conflict with any of your personal travel plans. I think we're deferring it until January because so many of our meetings are already scheduled in advance now with calendar. So if everyone's in agreement, I think we'll make that change. That will give us ample time to notice the public and others. So with your consensus, we'll move to that in January.
Sounds good.
Yeah, okay. It wouldn't be a 6 o'clock start, so why are we...
Work?
Yeah, I think that will be fine.
Okay, well, we can try it.
Yeah.
And if we run into issues, we can always revisit it, but hearing nothing else, I mean, there are some others here. I don't think it... I hope it doesn't matter to the public if we start a little earlier and end your evening earlier as well as ours. All right, so I think we have two new applications we're going to hear from tonight. Couple of things I just want to remind you of. You may remember that we have moved to a system now where we are not going to be reading in the entirety of the procedural resolutions. They are being posted on the town's website. So they are available for review in advance of the meeting. We will cover the most important points, things that, you know, have dates or members attached to them, but we will be just skimming over those. So that will keep things moving along as well. So the first application before us is the application for Thomas Daniels, 8 Slate Dock Road. These are improvements to the property. And I think I see Mr. Murray here to present.
Thank you. Thank you, Planning Board and Town of Rhinebeck. I wasn't aware that we had Kansas Gadget Tree.
It's been a long time since you've been here.
For future, can I bring like an iPad and cue it to that? Can we mirror it?
We'd like it to go through Jim.
files in advance.
So you have all of us, so I can't be surprised by a surprise.
No, not surprised. That is precisely why we do it the way we do it.
So I'm first to explain. So I have a, some clients who are applicants for a building permit for a new house and garage on existing property that is currently zoned and used as a single-family residence. They already, they bought the property with Board of Health approval, a septic design. In fact, there was a septic design before there was a house design. In fact, we had to go for reapproval of the septic design because of some hole. We did obtain that, so that will go through the Building Department. It should go through smoothly. We were presenting and asking for a permit for a house that conforms to setback, rear yard, side yard, front yard. Although we think even that discussion, which is the side yard and which is the front, may be something interesting to talk about. Otherwise, the house conforms in every other way. We have a pre-conference meeting. And in that pre-conference meeting, Jim raised some thoughtful questions and we responded to them and expect we will further now and in a public hearing. So we got to Rhinebeck Overlay District. We will need a site plan approval and special use permit. We understand that. It will go for historic review. And we'll go... There is a comment that the guest house slash garage is in the front yard. In fact, I think the site complications will, you'll find them conforming to everyone else in the neighborhood, actually. And then let me stop, and maybe lastly and interestingly, Slate Dock Road is actually owned by the railroad. So, and who uses this further? It's a beautiful little road. You head down to Rhinebeck and you make that sweeping turn. Soon after, it's on the right and it goes down to the river. The Rhinebeck Water Treatment Plant is down there. And three or four other homeowners use them a lot. Otherwise, nothing special about it. And I would bet that if we wanted to look deeply into right-of-ways, it's almost hard to find that the town and the railroad and the telephone company have recognized over many years the legal use of the road. The town most recently, actually. So the picture I'm showing you right here is a picture of the existing house. Like most projects, I think the owners bought it and said, "We'll make improvements to it." And went through a process of what can we do? How can we improve it? It's really tiny and it's really in bad shape and it, as it turns out, it, as many of us see today, it costs a lot more to fix it and improve it than to replace it. So we have, in fact, I think in the interest of time, unless some of you things to see it, I'm going to show you the site plan and not the house. It's just a house. I think the planning board will have a fun time asking questions about that house when we come back. But I think, I think the discussion of the site is most interesting. Here's the, here's the answer. Here's Slate Dock coming down from Rhinebeck. This here, Slate Dock comes down and then the driveway climbs up to really the existing west side. The dotted line here are the codes of the zoning setback requirements. Interestingly, and actually interestingly, I don't have the house on the picture here, but of course the planning board does. There's a neighbor here and there's a neighbor here. This neighbor enjoys looking at the river directly. And we're close to that neighbor, but we're actually proposing to be no closer. If not, we're close, but they're actually, because of the way the houses are oriented, they're pretty private. This house actually looks north and west and it does have this interesting seasonal view. So we've, we think considerably and thoughtfully put a garage here. It's only, the only trouble I think we're going to have here is this beautiful maple tree that they'd like to save. So we may want to be pushing this or even making it smaller. But otherwise, we think, we hope you view our application as favorable when we go to a public hearing and we lose your process reasonably sound. Do you have any questions for me?
I'd like to start with Jim. Jim, do you have some comments you want to offer?
Well, yeah, I think we talked about these in the pre-op meeting. The first one would just be that you are proposing the garage as a residence, as simply a guest house, so that would require an area variance because it's in front of the house. We're seeing Slate Dock Road as being the front yard. So that that structure then is in front of the primary, the principal structure, which would require variance for placement of the garage there. The only other two that I had is just a request on the plans, the device of heights of the buildings that you're proposing, making sure those are all in accordance with the code. And then I did take a quick drive-by the other day and based on the town code relating to driveways, you have a pretty steep grade there. I'm assuming it's at least 6% if not higher. It looks like it was crushed stone or something that was down there. The town code, if it's 6% greater or more, requires it to be paved to a certain distance coming off the town road or the main road. So I think some consideration of maybe paving for several feet of that driveway may be something for the planning board to discuss to help prevent washout and things that is pretty steep there. And those are pretty much my primary comments, I think.
So just want to respond to things. First of all, I'm in favor of not just paving, but maybe then putting what they call oil and chip on top because it's, it is steep. Note though, it is an existing driveway. It's been, I saw it deep from 1957, so I don't know when. And actually, interestingly, front yard, this is Henry Barron's house and his driveway comes in. This house had a drive, they shared the driveway. So really, this was the front yard and at some point, maybe quite a few decades ago, they subdivided it and the steep driveway was built, which is less desirable to use, especially in the winter. So the owners are aware of that and already asked us, "What can we do to improve it?" And with your help and approval, we'll be able to figure out a few clever ideas. So the front yard, this house has a, this neighbor house has a garage in the front yard facing north. The house faces Rhinebeck. This house has a, has a driveway over here on Slate Dock, but also has a garage, so garage in the front yard and they face Rhinebeck. So it's a complicated little more in lots and I think the triangular one, actually, this is probably the most recent house on the corner proper. But we hope when you review the site that you find it reasonable and are massing and are positioning the houses to be appropriate.
Are you, do you have a variance submitted to the zoning board in feels?
We submitted our application, but not, we're hoping you don't require a variance.
Is that what I've heard you just say?
You're saying it requires an area variance?
I believe based on my review that the front of the property would be the property, even though it's small, that's facing Slate Dock Road. That's where the driveway goes. That would appear to be the logical. But certainly, I'd leave that up to discussion with the planning board if you want to have a discussion about what the front, you know, front is and whether or not, because that then would dictate whether or not a variance is necessary for the garage slash guest house. But I believe it's off Slate Dock Road.
Yeah, I mean, if there were a classic lot, I mean, let me think on the Village where you drive past the house and park in the backyard, we would do it. But I don't think there's any, I think, I think the only reasonable thing to do is go for...
Yeah, I'm not saying it's unreasonable, just based on the code, you needed variance for that. And this is something that is asked of the ZBA periodically. It's not unusual.
So interesting note about what used to be the front yard. In fact, this house has two addresses, 291 Rhinebeck Road and 8 Slate Dock. At first, I submitted the application calling it 291 Rhinebeck Road because I felt that was a more attractive address. The county, the, let's see, it's the emergency services, 911, does not want 291 Rhinebeck Road because they want to access the property. And when you have a fire and the fire truck comes, they want to go to the address there. So we actually formally submitted a request to get rid of 291 Rhinebeck Road and call it 8 Slate Dock Home Park.
All right, so we do not have a formal determination of this, right? You can get a determination letter on this issue?
Of the address?
No. Of the variance, the need for the variance. Michael, is that something that needs to be reviewed?
It's something that we can definitely look at. It's almost another potential question is that because of the original driveway, as you're saying, we could almost say it was a corner lot with two front yards, which pretty complicates matters. But the general feeling, I think, would be that indeed, if the driveway is going up there to Slate Dock Road, that would be considered the front of the house where you're going onto, getting access to the highway. And therefore, after the subdivision, lost the other, the other access, the subdivision process, that the garage would be considered the front of the residence as it's proposed currently.
Could I, not further complicate it, but is it possible Slate Dock might be considered a private road and therefore it's not, it falls outside of that front yard and main road?
Since it can be used for access, if it were not legal access to the property, you couldn't use it. And if there are some restrictions on Slate Dock Road for that, and therefore you would have to find another way to get off, get off the property. But since it is legally used, we have private roads throughout the town, a number of them, and they're the access points for homes. And so my own feeling is, particularly in that is the front yard of the house where the driveway is entering on Slate Dock Road.
Okay, so what I was going to ask maybe to Michael, Jim, how do you define the front yard, right? Like I know a lot of prop, are you about to do this?
I was about to do that thing, it's a perfect evening.
Like is it with the house front doors oriented? Because a lot of driveways come in from the side, right? So how do you define it?
Just to shorten it up, it's a yard extending across the principal street side, i.e. front lot line of a lot. So again, because this doesn't have any frontage on another road, my opinion was that Slate Dock is the front of the...
And we're agreeable to that. It would be great if the process was straightforward, so I mean, I could follow up with you. Prepare something.
Yeah, I don't think it prevents us from accepting the application, but it is the next step. I think you need to schedule an appointment and speak to Michael and get this straightened out.
It would not hold up the application tonight at all.
Okay. Sean, Joe, Kathy, any questions or comments?
The age of the house that is on the cover of the now, which one house about?
Do you know, I want to say it's 1950s. But I'm guessing, I didn't know the answer, I'm blanking on it.
Kathy, were you asking in the off chance that it was historic, that it was older and historic? You were just curious?
It is being submitted to the TPAC though, because it's in the river.
Okay. Anything else before I skim over the procedural resolution? Okay, so we're going to accept the application. We're going to classify it as a type 2 seeker action for which coordinated review is concluded. We are scheduling the public hearing for September 7. Gretchen, are they all at 6:45? Delegates, planning board members, who would like to go?
I'll go.
Joe and...
I have to go anyway.
Kathy will go anyway. We're going to be referring the application to the CAB. We're going to be referring it to the Waterfront Advisory Committee. We're going to be referring it to HACAP. And we're going to be referring it to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development for review. I think that's about it for the resolution. We're all set to go? I need a motion.
So moved.
So moved Kathy, second, Delise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next, the Rhinebeck Community Nursery School, 34 Brookmead Drive. Site plan and special use permit to convert the use to a nursery school.
Hi, good evening.
Victoria.
Victoria Polidoro from the Northern Shaw Polidoro. Here on behalf of the community at Brookmead and Rhinebeck Community Nursery School. Here we have Brian Zeiglin from the community at Brookmead, as well as Rebecca Stotts, the director of the nursery school. And I think there are lots of parents in the audience as well tonight. I'll be sure they're supportive.
I think they're the younger part of the crowd that we know are more...
Yes, not used to so many young people in these meetings. So last time, the nursery school was before the board. They were seeking approval for a site plan and special use permit to swap out an accessory fitness center inside the pavilion with an accessory preschool. And some questions had come up about the applicable zoning. I think those have all been marked out. The project is being proposed as an accessory to the existing senior facility use. It's going to provide opportunities for intergenerational programming, storytime, parades, kids make seniors happy. So that's why we're here. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Oh, the application has also been revised to remove any exterior changes. So there are no playground, no fence, no boulders, nothing will be changed on the exterior at this time. That would be subject to a separate application down the road.
Jim? Want to do for anything you want to comment?
Most of my questions were answered based on the changes that took place between last presentation and this one. Since everything is indoor and out, it's mainly a question of use and I think that's been addressed with the ZA updated determination. So I think really the only question I had is just regarding any potential for outdoor play that you're going to have, you know, are the kids going to still go outside and are they going to use, or like grass or anything like that?
They will go outside, but there won't be a fenced area, so they will be supervised. They'll play games and use the lawn the same way that the seniors can go out and recreate.
In an unprogrammed space, essentially.
Yes.
And will those unprogrammed spaces be adjacent to the parking lots or do you have the option to move them away from parking lots?
So right now, the idea is to keep it near the building, but Brian, is there's potential for them to use...
Yeah, there's 75 acres and it's a lot of open land that they can use that's not close to the parking lot.
I mean, we know the soccer fields are there.
That's right.
I mean, do you envision moving the children to the soccer fields, that distance? Or I will just say that our concern that was raised previously was the safety issues related to parking lots and the possibility of someone inadvertently moving through the parking lot into a play area for children. So I think we're just raising that question again to make sure that the safety of kids playing is paramount. And I know it is. I'm not, I'm not saying this because I doubt what you're doing, but just for the record, to make people aware of the fact that there are hazards around parking lots and kids get away and kids, you know, scoot and do what kids do, so.
So that's something we'll take into consideration. We can talk about, you know, using the soccer fields during some morning times. We also don't think that there will be that many conflicts between the other uses in the building, but maybe once it's activated, hopefully by that time, we'll be back before you for an application for a fence.
Yeah, yeah, and I think if you can on your site plan sort of identify areas that you think they can safely recreate, that would be very helpful to have. So we know what the parameters are going to be. And just because I need some refreshment, are there any requirements from the state or the county in terms of the operations of nursery schools?
So right now, there are no requirements. If they do switch to a full-time daycare, you will have to come back before this board. And then the state does get involved and there are requirements for fencing. There has to be an authorized play area for a licensed daycare.
That's a difference between a nursery school and a licensed daycare.
Yes.
Nursery school is under three hours a day. We operate in two hours and fifteen minutes a day.
Okay, and I knew that when you bump up to licensed daycare, there are other levels of review that are required.
Correct, and you know, ultimately that is a goal and so when, when we come back for future approvals, including a fence and a playground, you know, that might be a consideration.
Jim, anything else? Planning board members, comments?
Just procedurally, so we're receiving this as our new application. Is there anything that puts the next steps in this? They're going to go, "If we receive it..."
We've received the application. They've revised the application by removing the play area outside and the fencing. So all the, all that's before us now is the use. And we will proceed with it the same way we would do with any new application by identifying people to make the site visit and come back and report. I believe, I believe we will in a minute, this is going to be continued to when, Gretchen?
This will be a public hearing on September 7.
Same time, right?
Yeah, September 7.
Oh, right, 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 oh, I see, sorry. Okay, September 7, that's from the last meeting. And is my understanding that you do not officially open, if approved, until September 18th? Is that, what is the difference?
That's correct. I mean, they, right now, they'd like to be able to show parents the space, but there's no programming or the school is not in session until September 18th, which is starting.
September 13th.
Oh, 13th. Right, September 13th pending approval of the planning board.
Which could take place on the 7th.
Yes.
Okay. Any comments or questions from anyone else?
No.
All right, let me buzz through this. So we're accepting the application as adequate for further review. We're classifying it as type 2 seeker. We're scheduling a public hearing for September 7th at 6:45 PM. Planning board members, who would like to make a site visit? Sean? Joe? Report back. We are going to be referring this to the Conservation Advisory Board and we're referring it to Duchess County Planning and Development. Anything else we need to cover? Should be it. Can I have a motion? Michael, second?
Second, Sean.
Second, Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Thank you, everyone. We'll see you on the 7th.
Well, you see some of us before.
I'll see some of you in a few minutes.
Oh, I didn't mean that, Sean. Okay, we're now going to move into the public hearing portion. We're past 6:45. So we're ready to go. Some of you may know or may have noticed that we're adopting a new procedure, asking people to sign in and to sign up if they wish to speak. That doesn't mean that you have to speak if you've signed up, nor does it mean you can't speak if you didn't sign up. But we'd like to get a little structure to it as we move forward. And Jim is just going to pick up the signup sheets. And then we're just going to quickly, I think, share again the sort of rules we'd like to follow based on public hearings. All of which are an attempt to keep things moving along and to allow everybody an opportunity to participate. When you quickly post the rules, or you can do that. So I will say in advance that for the most part tonight, either by the request of the applicant or because of lack of information, most of these public hearings will be continued for a variety of reasons, which we'll go into as we get to them.
Can I just run through these quickly?
Yes, would you, Jim?
Okay, so our public hearing process, we're asking if you'd like to speak about, you just said the signup, sign-in sheet. If you didn't do that, you're still more than welcome to speak. We're just going to kind of take people in order. Some nights, it's more important than others, what we're talking about. We're asking everyone to try and limit your discussion to five minutes. Provide written comments if you want. You can always submit those to the planning board office. If you're hearing five minutes, we may give you a five-minute warning depending on how many people want to speak. Please only provide new comments. If you've noted an issue previously or we've heard it previously, the planning board has taken it under advisement and they are aware of that comment. And then please just make sure you direct your questions to the planning board or an applicant or their representative.
Okay, first up this evening, Alderkill, 15 Ballambecker Road, major subdivision.
Hey, everyone. Carl Duncan Bird for the Alderkill subdivision. I'll talk, I know I have some neighbors here tonight, so I'll talk through the basics of our plan quickly. But first, I just want to acknowledge that I have spoken with some of my neighbors already and I understand there are some concerns. Not surprised anytime something like this happens in one's neighborhood. You know, we were, my parents and I, we were living on this property when Button Wood Lane first came in, when those houses were built. So the shoe was properly on the other foot at the time, so I, and I hope I've taken that experience to heart in designing this plan, both for the sake of protecting our land, but also protecting the privacy of our new neighbors on Button Wood Lane. We are, have sized our lots to match, pretty closely, those existing on Button Wood Lane, but otherwise, we're... but otherwise, we're looking for something significantly lower impact and more heavily forested. Um, it's really a personal project for me and a couple of friends of mine. The first house is going to my fiancee and me for ourselves. Um, and, you know, there's still a couple of friends of ours that grew up with me on the property, who love it there and even helped me maintain it over the last few years. Um, through no small expenditure of their own time. So we'll be getting at least good neighbors who are going to take care of that property that we are developing a small portion of. Um, I think our love for the place is reflected in the amount of time we've taken over the last couple of years to, um, design this plan. We've managed to avoid all existing stone walls, uh, not coming near the Landsman Kill stream or our tributary that we have off the Landsman Kill. It runs north to south down the center of the property there. It's not on that map, but it runs right through the conservation easement there. Um, we'll continue to maintain all of the walking trails, the crossings, streams, walk verges, signage, et cetera. None of that's going to change. Um, additionally, we're proposing a permanent conservation area stretching down. It's that large, myself, lob sort of down the middle there. Okay, my, where's it from? Yep, that one right there. So that's a proposed permanent conservation area, um, that will protect the tributary that runs over top and all of the, what I'm told are pretty valuable resources and habitats within that area. That's how we chose that. Um, I believe that a habitat assessment we had commissioned, um, like Milliki suggested, would be affecting about six acres of forest altogether in this development. So, um, even if it's seven or eight, uh, we're talking about, looking at this property affecting six, seven, eight, single-digit number of acres as minimally as possible. And that's leaving a hundred and thirty-some acres that are going to be entirely untouched. Um, uh, just a couple of more things that came out of conversations I've had with, uh, Brian Vincent Benetti um, and a couple of my other neighbors. Um, first of all, the issue of the exact location of our shared driveway with the Benettis, uh, particularly at the mouth of Buttonwood Lane, um, will be resolved. Uh, we haven't done our surveys yet, and that was going to be part of eliminating that. But, uh, we've reached out to, um, Jim Decker to get a move on with it. So as soon as we know exactly where that lies, we'll then choose the, as we have planned this from the beginning, the lowest-impact option that's available to us. Um, and then the other thing, a very important thing, but a rather technical one, is the yield plan we had to submit, which shows an eighteen acre, uh, hypothetical subdivision. I've talked to at least a few neighbors who thought we were proposing, uh, yeah, if we can get that up, that would be great. Uh, yeah, that's it basically. So, um, I've talked to a few neighbors who thought we were proposing to do that to our property. It is not what we want to do to it. We are not proposing an eighteen-acre subdivision. We are proposing just the four acres, um, sorry, eighteen lot subdivision. Um, we're just proposing four lots in the previous maps. Um, a yield plan, which I didn't know until six months ago. And I don't know how anyone would have known, looking at the packets, but it's just a hypothetical document that is, it's required by the zoning code that we submit to planning board. So, so that the planning board members can, um, get an idea of what this could look like if we weren't doing a conservation subdivision if we're doing. If we had sold the property to a developer, let's say, and they came in guns blazing and we were ready to blow the whole thing up. But that is not us. I am not that developer. And the four lots that we saw on the previous map is all we have in the intention to do. So I hope I can make that abundantly clear, because I think some neighbors lost sleep over that misconception. Um, uh, that's about it. Uh, like I said, I've been speaking to some of my neighbors already, but, um, Gretchen has my phone number. She's welcome to give it out to anyone who wants to speak to me directly for clarification on this or really anything else to do with the project. I'm happy to talk to people when, when, um, thanks.
Jim?
Uh, well, most of my comments, I think, are procedural. I don't know if we want to get into those in our more detailed discussions, but, um, given this is a conservation subdivision, I think maybe one of the first we've done in a long time, if ever. It is a multi-step process. Um, so we have approved the, um, we've done a procedural resolution to say to accept this. I think tonight, based on my, my read of the code, again, since we've never done one before, really it's kind of discuss, you know, the overall layout and any issues you have, any concerns or thoughts you have about it. Um, schedule the next public hearing to then discuss that preliminary, that essentially preliminary plan and the four-step design process. You know, it's already been designed, um, but I think the next step would be to talk about that design after we've had a larger discussion about just kind of your overall thoughts at this point in time. Um, at which time, at some point, we'll need, obviously, the survey that you discussed.
Yes, yeah, we have rolled one, but I, you know, we're going back decades. So we're redoing the entire property, as well as, of course, the new lots eventually, one more. You know, I've gotten feedback from you guys, the lot lines, yeah.
So I think it's just kind of confirming that it is a, a major subdivision, which I think we've already done. We did a procedural resolution, and to answer any questions you have, any initial thoughts you have, and then we'll discuss that kind of four-step design process, um, which is written as a collaborative design process, but I think it's acceptable as proposed or if there are any tweaks, that's kind of what we do at the next step. Um, look at the survey, discuss any questions, you know, the public has an access issue, we know, um, been brought up. And then just kind of make our way through the steps. Um, another meeting or two probably.
Okay.
At least kind of get through the, the next steps as it's written.
Jim, is that, uh, is that, are there similar things you're talking about? Things that will happen between meetings among you guys? And by any amount, are you talking about at the next meeting, all of that will be discussed? As far as, I've read through the, I know, I'm familiar with what the four-step design process is. Um, but, uh, yeah, is that?
It would all be done publicly. It's all public discussion, and that's a part of the, the part of this process is that all this discussion is supposed to happen in public hearings.
Got it.
So that's why we have to, and look through it and stuff like that.
Um, I can also report that we did get a, a partial report back from HAC. They have not reviewed it from the historic side at this point, but have back from Dr. Wentworth the opinion that it will require, you know, a Phase One A and One B archaeology.
I heard One A on the inside, wasn't it?
I think both One A and B, correct?
Okay.
That's just the report that came in. And for members of the public, it's because, uh, the proposed, uh, activities take place on a plateau overlooking the Landsman Kill.
Yes, it was explained to me why that was significant.
Right, right.
I had no idea, but she made it.
Well, you knew it was special and now you know it's even more special.
You went another way.
Yeah, in another way, it's potentially special. So I would recommend that you employ the services of a, of an archaeological firm to do that at your earliest convenience, because, you know, the sooner you get that information, the sooner the application can move along.
Well done.
So let me ask my colleagues if they have questions or issues they want to raise. Nan? Jim?
Do you have another one? Um, just kind of tying on to what Melody said is, um, you need to identify an after-profit conservation organization. Is a lot of the conservation land re, enough?
Yes, uh, sorry, we've talked to most of them. Uh, it seems the Senecats and, and Wendy are focusing more on outright donations, which I'm sure is nice for them, but it's not really what we're looking to do. But, uh, D L C has been quite receptive. We've been working with Karen, who, um, they had an executive committee meeting on July nineteenth where they were going to discuss, at least their preliminary, uh, the map we, um, gave them, which has a few tweaks from this one. Um, looked good, but they were going to put it before their executive committee. And then Karen was leaving directly on vacation, so I have not heard that, but I expect to hear from Karen in the next week or so. Uh, when that becomes official, I'll, I'll, I'll have joined in attachment to our application.
Yeah, absolutely, it's just, you know, that's part we need, so it's good you're into process now.
Yeah, yeah, no, they've been great. We've had a good, uh, look at them.
I just have a general question, where is Buttonwood in relationship to this?
Buttonwood is right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So like, that's like the woods between Buttonwood and Ballenbeck.
This year?
Yeah.
Oh, you mean our property in general?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, basically, there's, uh, the Maranachos property up here and, um, a little other. But yeah, we, we account for a lot of the ones between Buttonwood and Ballenbeck. Ballenbeck is in the north and Buttonwood's west, south, so, catamaran, but yeah, basically.
Okay, um, there is nothing from the planning board. If this is a public hearing, if there are people who would like to comment on this application?
Really, may I ask one question as the engineer on the front? Is, um, is plan board lead agency per seeker, I ask, because if there's a component of this where you use the Chris system with SHIBO, uh, they may, you have to have one assigned even to get into that.
Into Chris?
Yeah. Does, does plan board lead agency or not yet?
Did, did we, should we classify?
Classified is, um, unlisted, I believe.
Did, did we classify as?
I think we've classified as unlisted.
Okay, that's what I thought too. Well, for that, there's not coordinated environmental review.
Okay.
Or unlisted.
I'll follow up. It's just a computer system where if you don't enter.
Well, I know wonderful things about it.
It can, it, once you get in.
Not for the people who use it either.
Okay, okay, I'll follow up with any questions, thank you.
Okay, um, the only person that we have signed up is Leo. Is Leo here?
Thanks, sir.
Come on up, Leo, and identify yourself. I'd be happy to hear your comments.
My name is Leo Lucho, I live in Twenty-two Buttonwood Lane. Do I have to point you there on the map?
No, not unless you want to.
Anyways, uh, I have a question about the electrical power source that would most likely come from the subdivision. Can, uh, Central Hudson Hudson confirm that there is adequate power, which will not result in a brownout or a lack of power for the remaining lots yet to be built? That is my concern.
Okay. Carl, do you have anything you want to say about that at this time or not yet?
I'm sorry, I have trouble hearing the question, but I have to ask if Central Hudson has confirmed that, uh, there will be sufficient power on this.
What I'm after is, you're more likely to get the power from, uh, somewhere around Buttonwood, and you're not, right?
Yes, that's right.
All right, uh, usually a subdivision, the, uh, power company comes in and they assess how much power is going to be used in the whole development, so they can adequately feed it. With four more lots and there's several other lots not developed yet, uh, I'd like to know.
Oh, being several more existing on Buttonwood Lane?
That's right.
I see, I see. Um, we do not have an answer yet to the Central Hudson, but, uh, of course, we will make sure that we're not, uh, just brownouts of the rest of Buttonwood Lane.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
That's not from us.
I, I, I heard, I, the answer I heard is that he would be confirming that.
Confirming that, okay.
Is that correct, Carl? I don't mean to misquote you.
Yes, that's right. As soon as the driveways are designed and we have Central Hudson in to figure out the paths and where transformers will need to go, then that's when technical questions like that will be answered. And it's, I wouldn't say it's wishy-washy, to say that I will absolutely make sure, as I have from the start of this process, that everything is done with the utmost respect for the quality of what my neighbors and the entire neighborhood and the cost-cutting measures will be made and will make sure that everything's done right.
Okay, that was, Leo is the only person that, yes?
I didn't sign up, I forgot.
Oh, you forgot?
I was busy.
Would you want to come up?
Yes, thank you. I missed the signup sheet. Hi, good evening, Victoria Polidoro, here on behalf of, behalf of Brian and Samantha Benetti. The Benettis own the property, which is directly south of that proposed, um, driveway. It's the, the flag to that lot. And right now, the application materials are incomplete in that they show the driveway, um, this property instead of being, um, partially located on the Benetti property. I provided a detailed
Yes.
letter to the board, so I'm just going to make this brief.
Right, but I think Carl already indicated that that's being looked into?
Right. So we just asked that, um, the public hearing be continued until
Mm-hmm.
um, you have accurate application materials. We also believe that this will require site plan and special use permit review and possibly a wetlands application, because it's in the water resources overlay. And depending on where the driveway ends up, it, it may be disturbing of that ones.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's it. We will be following the application and thank you for your time.
Okay.
Uh, I'm from Barbara, uh, resident on the Buttonwood Lane, the property that adjoins this subdivision. Uh, would like to reference, I think, in front of all of you, you have a copy of the letter submitted by Joe Ely with a list of questions and concerns that, uh, he has concerning the subdivision. I would like to state that I echo every one of his comments. I was nobody able to get a, a formal letter into the board. And, uh, one of our major concerns is the right-of-way access into that subdivision. When the Buttonwood Lane subdivision was created, it was our understanding that if anything was divided or subdivided or developed in that, uh, uh, property, that that right-of-way would be constructed under the same conditions as the Buttonwood Lane road. So not a shared driveway, but a town, uh, road constructed to town specifications and then, uh, beaded to the town and thereby, uh, maintained, plowed, et cetera. Uh, one of the big concerns, if that is done as a shared driveway, uh, for those of you who are not familiar to, to our list of concerns, uh, things like garbage cans and mailboxes, uh, a shared driveway would be at the entrance of the access road on Buttonwood. Right?
Yes, I've read this, yeah, this letter.
And, uh, that's not acceptable to us. So we're looking to see whether or not, and I couldn't understand everything that was said. So, uh, we want to make sure that that is a, becomes a town road, uh, built to town specifications and beaded to the town and maintained and controlled by the town, not a shared driveway. Right? Uh, a few other concerns I wanted to read them all. Anyone who likes, would like to see the rest of the concerns or for you to get a copy of this, I've provided for you, and the board has them. So I won't take any more time. But that's one of the main concerns. Uh, the only one I'm understanding from Leo, the, uh, power cable, I hadn't even thought of that, but, uh, is there adequate power to that subdivision? Thank you.
Thanks, bro. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir.
Sorry, I just wanted to put a second line. I'm Brian Benetti, I'm the neighbor of Victoria, this, this being our house. I just, I just also wanted to ask a question about, I didn't understand, I didn't have time to talk about it beforehand. Um, does a, a four-lot subdivision, a conservation subdivision, need a, a private road to be built? Or can it be a shared driveway? I don't know if that was a.
Something I have to think through.
I think we have to, I, I, one of the things that I think Jim alluded to is, I believe Michael can correct me, that this is the first conservation subdivision that's been done in the town.
It is.
So we are all learning along the way.
Gotcha.
And we will take the, whatever time is necessary, uh, to work this through. So we appreciate your comments and, you know.
No, just because we're concerned about obviously our property being emptied by a driver all sides or all, all, most of the sides of the property, so. But I, I didn't know about the, the private road.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Yes?
My name is Jim Marinaccio.
Would you use a microphone, please?
My name is Jim Marinaccio. I own the property, reporting, uh, this area that we've shown that my property is up here, but actually, my property runs right along this line. Um, I have concerns. Um, I guess a lot of my concerns, um, aren't that important because, uh, there's a flood plain that runs through there. I don't know, and I'm sure that, uh, the flood plains and that were looked at. I walked down in there. I know the area well, because all of the land that I bought on Buttonwood Lane has been has been, uh, divided into lots, building lots. Uh, I haven't built on it, um, and I don't have any immediate plans. Um, but, um, the area down in there, it's, it's a bog. I mean, it, it's so wet that I can't imagine being able to build down in there. Aside from the fact, when I went down there, the area is infested with mosquitoes. So I, of course, these are the things that probably aren't even relevant at this point. Um, but I just wanted to say that I'm here and I'm concerned. And the distance that the house is from the property line, uh, I don't know what the regulations are. And then the last question I have is, how did three and a half acres get approved when I've always been under the impression that it was five acres was zoning?
So, so nothing's been approved on this plan right now. This is a proposal. Um, the, the RC five does require five acres zoning, but the conservation subdivision regulations in the code allow for the lots to be smaller for the purpose of preserving land. That's the trick, one of the trade-offs. So the smaller lots.
That was done at one of these meetings?
It hasn't been.
And that, that's what we're discussing right now. That's what's in the code, that's what's permitted, and that's what's been proposed, and that's the discussion we're having.
Okay.
And, and that discussion is open.
Okay.
Uh, as Jim points out, no decision has been made.
So this is not a done deal?
Absolutely not. And I, I think you've heard tonight, there's a lot of open-ended questions, not the least of which is mapping and the accuracy of that.
Exactly.
And, you know, I, I certainly know it will be continued tonight, um, and conceivably continued again. I can't predict that, but I think there's still some work to be done.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
I, I just look to reiterate, this is, as I mentioned earlier, a multi-step process. So we did have the initial presentation where we accepted the procedure resolution. We're talking tonight about kind of higher level issues and concerns that the board may have, and that, you know, the neighbors have. But there is a more, a four-step process that goes with this, so there's more discussion, you know, take place. Both questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, one, one other thing.
Yes.
Um, if the, the conservation easement, aside from the lots that have been designated lots, all the rest of that land then is reserved as a conservation easement. Does that mean we can't take trees down?
Well, I think.
I mean, what is being, what should be done with that?
The, the details of the easement have yet to, I mean, what it means is there's a conservation easement protecting that land. The details of which would be worked out between perhaps, he's talking about the Dutchess Land Conservancy. If they hold the easement, there will be details that will be forthcoming about that, that will be part of a public hearing that the public can learn about. So there will still be opportunities to comment about the specifics of the easement.
Also too, this map does not show the landsman kill running right through that. And I'll be darned if I can see how.
Well, we can show you that.
You could safely put, um, uh, septic fields and systems in an area that's so close to water.
Um, certainly we're aware of where the landsman kill goes and the, and the, and the job of designing a conservation easement is to avoid or mitigate those intrusions. And so that's what Carl's all about. So he's gonna have to answer your question at some point.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
James, which one is, I mean, obviously there are all different wetlands.
We got another pop girl with the mic, and I don't think Carl can define such a distinct green line.
Oh, it's there.
In here, is that right?
The watering line there is actually a, it's a, I'm told it was dug as a runoff ditch for farmland, uh, in the field there. So, but it runs into the landsman kill. The landsman kill is the sort of U-shaped top piece there. Over there, yeah.
Anyone else from the public wishing to comment? Um, I'm looking around and I, Kathy, were you the only person that was on the site visit that toured tonight?
Yes, I was, in the rain and the mud.
And the rain and the mud and the dredging.
I didn't see it much, just like I was.
Okay. Alright, so I'm not gonna ask for a site visit report. Michael, you have been there before, so anything you wanna offer?
I toured the entire property. And this is a pretty good depiction of the, of the water resources on the property. There are a number of, um, wetlands associated with them. Where they're placing the houses as we walk through is on a higher plateau above those areas. So from the, the walking we did, and we're sure we're refining these maps and refining this map. It's staying away from the principal water resources on the property, uh, of which there are many. And quite frankly, it's probably about the only place you really could do any significant development on this property without really intruding into the water resources on the property. There are great many. Just so you're aware, uh, adjoining this property is the area for the, uh, mine, not wait, schoolhouse that's being proposed. Uh, much of that property, good significant, is a complex of three DEC-regulated wetlands, as well as the headwaters of the landsman kill. So this whole portion of our town is extraordinarily rich in water resources. It's a remarkable area. And, uh, I certainly want to see every effort made possible to preserve those resources because they're getting few and far between. And they're still basically naturally safe there. So you can be sure that this plan is gonna do everything it can to make sure whatever happens here will preserve those resources. It's very important to all of us.
Okay, we're ready to move on. I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until, again, September seventh, gotcha?
Yes.
Is that right? At six forty-five? Could I have such a motion?
Someone?
Motion, my Michael, second Kathy?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension? Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to our second public hearing, Christopher Hines, Wilder Cliff LLC, Five Twenty Four Mill Road. Improvements to existing structure, new driveway, renovate existing shed. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
This is all the new stuff that we're just receiving this permit.
Yes.
So we know we're not gonna go over. We're not gonna, are we gonna go in detail or are we gonna?
I just, uh, I'm talking to your.
Pardon?
I was trying to go through.
Okay. I mean, usually we like to get a little bit advanced.
I understand. And, and so how do you, like, I got the picture, Jim, how do you, how do you advance?
Oh, I was just.
Oh.
We put Jerry at the end. Now, I just wanna say upfront that, you know, some of this material is coming in fresh, hot off the press. Um, so we will be continuing it. I want, I want the board to be aware of the fact that this is gonna be continued and that we will be requesting another site visit.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, uh, you know, a compilation of, we've had multiple visits with, uh, various boards, uh, out at the site. And so, um, um, you know, listen to, uh, to the comments and so this is, uh, tonight's.
Excuse me, if, uh, excuse me, uh, Vern, Carl. We can't really hear. If you guys wanna take it outside, I appreciate it. Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, so this.
That's the floor.
Uh-huh. This material is a, you know, a compilation of that. And so this evening, I'm here with, um, Seth Dickel from my office, um, Larry Barak and Jordan Valdina. Um, who have worked on, uh, barn. And then also, uh, uh, the applicants, uh, Chris and Laura Hines are also here. And so put together, uh, and I'll try to be complete and quick through, uh, a, uh, you know, presentation to, uh, go through, uh, the various aspects of the project. Uh, speak to a little bit of the history of, of the property. And, uh, I think that what I'd like to do is, uh, you know, start out with having, uh, Chris just, you know, speak to the board. Uh, just to, uh, uh, introduce himself and then also some, uh, you know, details with regard to their um, interest in, in purchasing this property and how they're going to, uh, how they're going to take care of it.
Thank you, Mark, for giving me everyone. I've met some of you, but I wanted to, like Mark suggested, introduce you to my wife and my, and my, we have small wife Laura, Chris, we have three children. We've, uh, we have a long personal history with the area. We've been coming to Rindbeck for sixteen years. We've lived in Berrytown for ten, Clinton Corners for five. And, uh, we even have a personal history with this home. We knew Sam Hall pretty well and had the pleasure of drinking whiskey in the library with him while he was alive and the owner of this important place. And, uh, we almost even bought the home in twenty twelve. Sam and his son offered it to us, uh, before it was put on the market, and we took a real long hard look at it. And the truth was, we didn't quite have the courage to do what Fareed Zakaria did, which was, in our opinion, incredible restoration of this important site. Uh, so we're thankful to him for that. And, um, I know that when, uh, Manny or Kuzo and, uh, Andrew bought the home, they did some things that, uh, weren't proper and we're looking to certainly correct all of those. And then in addition, uh, do some things to improve the property. Um, I studied history in college. That's one of the most attractive things about the home. As you may know, it was built in seventeen ninety-nine. We're only the eighth family to ever own the home and one of the few to ever own it with children, which is kind of cool. And, um, so, you know, Mark and Larry are gonna walk you through what we propose to do. But, you know, we really do view ourselves as custodians of this important place. And many of the things we hope, um, you'll see are in keeping with the important history of this property. For example, um, we're proposing a new driveway access on Morton Road. The, the historical record shows that that did previously exist. Um, and another example is, you know, we're proposing to, um, put a, uh, a deck on the west facade of the Bond Barn, which is also where one used to reside. Um, we believe it was taken down by Manny and Andrew. Uh, another example is, um, certainly when we visited the property with Sam and, uh, and went Fareed on it, because I just verified it with him the other day, there were considerable plantings along Mill Road which were removed by the prior owner. And then, for those of you who've been there, you've seen these, uh, non-indigenous plantings that are still after three years about this tall and aren't doing well. So we're proposing to restore some of that and, and create some privacy for ourselves and our family. Uh, if you sit in our pool or stand by our pool or even our bedroom window at night, uh, you can watch, uh, the eleven hundred some odd feet of road footage. The, uh, lights come beaming into the house. And, uh, you know, we're looking to sort of create some privacy for ourselves and our family. So we thank you for your time and in consideration.
Thank you, Chris. Um, so, um, Jim, if you could start to, let's go through the slides. I'm gonna first start, one more, please, Jim. So this is the, um, this is the overall site plan for the property. This hasn't, this, you know, this is, uh, per the original application. There have not been, uh, uh, many changes uh, to this overall plan. Other than that, some of the, um, comments that, uh, and requests that have come back from AIPAC and also of board members just ask for clarification, uh, with regard to what is existing and what's proposed on the property. And so what I've done, um, with this overall site plan, I've detailed all existing features and anything that's proposed. And Jim, if you could just, uh, zoom in a little bit. Uh, and I'll just, thank you, that's great, thank you. And, uh, once again, I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll start with this from, I'm from Mill Road and, and, um, and works to the west. Here is, uh, the existing entrance right now. As, um, as Chris mentioned, and I'll get into it, uh, later. Um, the new access is gonna be proposed off of, off of Morton Road, and I'll, I'll get into that a little bit, yeah, right through here. Um, there's Morton Road and, and as we go through the slides, I'll, I'll show some historic slides of which there was actually access off of both Mill Road and Morton Road historically on the property. Uh, I've, uh, between our, our last presentation and this meeting, I met with, uh, Dutchess County Department of Public Works. Um, they have conceptually approved, uh, this access point. Uh, what remains is for me to submit, uh, one of the plans that you'll see here tonight. That just shows some specific details with regard to, um, you know, county requirements for access for single-family residents. Um, and so that, uh, that's been conceptually approved. Uh, moving a, a long through here now, um, once again, I'm gonna stay on Mill Road. In this area here, and I'll get into more detail, this is, uh, this, in this area here, uh, that is, uh, Chris referred to it. That's where some of the, uh, plantings are being proposed for this project to provide screening from the residence, which is located right here. So provide screening for the residents and also the pool. There is the pool right there. And then also, this is the existing, uh, historic playhouse. That's, that's located right here. And so, uh, once again, some screening, uh, tree screening to go through here. And as you go through the slides, I provide a little bit more detail. I'm gonna do more of an overview on this script sheet. So then as you, as you enter into the property, I mentioned the residence, um, uh, the pool over here. There is also, um, uh, this right here was a, was a previous structure that was, uh, constructed, not, a structure that was constructed by the previous owners illegally. And so, uh, part of this application will be for removal of just a portion of that. And I've, I've been in touch with the building department. And so what this is, is there's, there's an actual deck here. There's a platform. And underneath that platform is a foundation, which, and you can see when you take a look at the, the contours here, it's pretty, you know, it's a fairly good slope through here. And so, uh, what Chris and Laura would like to do is retain the foundation for this, stone face it, and then use it as a seating area. So then, uh, the application to the building department would be for demolition permit, to just remove the top deck. And then this foundation would remain. And so that becomes part of this special, uh, site plan and special permit application because of its, uh, location and proximity to the Hudson River, Hudson River being over here. And then this line right here, uh, represents a thousand feet from the Hudson River. So that is a, uh, you know, important, uh, component of this because that's a, a requirement in the town, Rindbeck, uh, zoning, um, zoning code. Any, any work that's done within a thousand feet of the river requires application to this board. And so, um, once again, this, the, just the, the foundation of this will remain. The deck will be removed and will be, will be removed legally with a demolition permit. Uh, then as you, um, as you enter into the property, I know there was some question from, uh, AIPAC as to, uh, what is existing and what's proposed on this. There's an existing septic system. Uh, there's an absorption field here. There's actually two absorption fields. There's one here for the main residence and what was also part of the playhouse. So, uh, the previous owners of the playhouse used it as a pool house. So there was, there were water and sewer hookups into here into a pump station, into an absorption field that's, that's located over here. Uh, for the, for the actual barn, I'll just stay on septic system. There's an existing septic system, uh, um.
Mark, which, excuse me, the previous owners with that septic?
Uh, that would be, um, Zolder, Andrew Zolder. That's, I have, uh, I have plans of, that were approved by the Dutchess County Department. Uh, so, uh, these plans are all approved. And then I, I actually also obtained as-built, uh, information for the septic system. Uh, water supply is right here, Kathy, right by, there's a, there's a, off of the driveway, there's a little parking area here. And then the, the water supply for the property is located there. Uh, so back into this area here, so. So back into this area here, so there's this existing absorption field. And then there's a tennis court and basketball court that's located here. Utilities come in overhead, right in this location here. And then there's a, there's a utility pole, and then it's underground from there. Part of this application is to, is to remove all overhead utility lines on the property. So everything will be buried and will ultimately be underground. That is a proposal. Moving, moving to the west. So going along the existing driveway. Driveway exists up to this point right here. So there's a loop. Parking area here, there's some actual parking on the north side of this. From this triangle area, then there's existing parking in front of the barn. This section through here is being proposed as part of the, you know, the adaptive reuse of this historic barn right here. And so it's being proposed as a garage. So what this, this new section of driveway that comes in through here would be access into the garage doors, which would be located on the north side of the property. You know, I had mentioned the plantings that were going to take place along Mill Road. There's also plantings that are being proposed through conversation with Wilderstein. And so those, those plantings are also detailed in the plans that have been submitted to this board. No changes from the, from the previous, previous applications. Jim, if you could actually go to the next slide, please. And just, if you could maybe, once again, what this, what this does, and this is just a, this is a new drawing for the, for the board, but all the same information. I've just tried to compile it on a different scale plan. That provides more detail, starting with the new driveway. And it shows, you know, regrading and drainage necessary off of the new driveway. It also shows, you know, I'll go back to the historic playhouse located here. Chris and Laura have, you know, have thought about relocation of that. And so one area for relocation being proposed is right here, right alongside the driveway. So as you enter in the driveway, the location of the playhouse would be moved to here. Going back to this-
Mark, you say one location?
Well, that's the-
The preferred location?
Preferred location, yes. Back on here, what I've done is, Jim, if you could maybe zoom in this, this area a little bit for me, please. Thank you. This, this is reflective of the landscape plans that have been submitted as part of this application. Once again, previous material. All I tried to do was give a more of an overview as to what's going to occur. Once again, you can see the shaded area here. This section of the, of the driveway is going to be taken out of service. So it'll be tough soil seeded and mulched, and the new driveway from Morton Road will come in like this. On this plan, I've detailed trees, it's twofold. It's some trees to be removed and also trees to be planted in this area through here. And I've outlined those various areas on these plans. They are, they're directly reflective of the landscape plans that have been submitted to the board. And we'll get to those. I have those on the following slides. Same thing in this area over here. This is the area that provides screening to Wilderstein through here. And so there are some tree removal of invasive, some locust trees, some mantis trees through here. That, both Chris and Laura have had a conversation with Wilderstein about. And they're quite happy that some of those trees are going to be removed. And there'll be new plantings that will, that will now, will now occur in this area and provide screening from the barn and to the, I believe this is the garden shed, if that's correct, for the garden shed. That was the primary reason for me to, to, you know, a more detailed plan that shows improvements for, once again, just to re-quick recap. Driveway to Morton Road, removal of this section of driveway, new supplement plantings here, like Chris had mentioned, just to, this section through here, just to afford privacy for both the house and when you go to the south here, the pool, from the, you know, from the interference or traffic that is going up and down Mill Road. Next slide, please, Jim. These are, just, I'll just quickly go through. This is from the landscape architect. These are the detailed plans which provide, you know, species type, size, the plantings to occur both along the, along Mill Road and also between this property and Wilderstein.
This hasn't changed, correct?
This has not changed. There's really only one thing that's changed in the application. All this material that I've covered is all, has been per the original application. I've supplemented it with some engineering detail, but it's still, conceptually, it's all the same. Next slide, please, Jim. This is just that section through Wilderstein through here. Once again, just some historical information showing, here's the property here. It shows access off of Mill Road and also Morton Road. Next slide, please. This, if you could just enlarge it, Jim. This is, once again, some more engineering detail I provided for the new driveway. It's a plan and profile for the driveway. Also speaks to drainage improvements and adequate erosion and sediment control for the construction. Just, and just one other, you know, one other thing is just detail with, you know, such share of turnout here. Building road requires a turnout, deconstructed on any driveways greater than five hundred feet. So that's now included. Next slide, please.
Mark, the reason that we're closing off the Mill Road access is the county allows one access to County Route five.
Oh, that's correct. Thank you, Jim. So actually, even, you know, this is, this is signed very evidently that, you know, this is County Route number eighty-five. Mill Road, not so much, but Mill Road is a county road. It is, it is still part, it's County Route eighty-five. And then it actually changes when it goes to Ryback County High Park Board. Next slide, please. You know, I think, now, I just want to check this. I think it gets into a location where I think Larry, you can step up and just start to talk about the structures and the barn.
I can't say much about this picture, although I did take it. It's a treasure. Backyard has a large garden terrace. And it's diamond, but we might do it. And then, how about the next slide? This is the, this is the playhouse. It's a very, very small building. It's about twelve by eight. And it's badly in need of repair. And very luckily for the playhouse, the heists are ready to restore it. So they want to relocate. It's been there for quite a long time. Chris, did you tell me that the child, that people live there?
So it was built for Mary Garrettson, who was the daughter of the first owners. And she used it as a playhouse. And she also was the longest running resident at Wilderfoot. She lived there all of her life, which was quite long, eighty or ninety years, I believe.
Do you know when she died, Chris? Do you have that? I mean, I know you have all the information.
I have it on my phone, is what I can look it up.
Well, only recently-
Approximately, maybe eighteen, eighty, something like that?
We think seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine?
We think seventy-nine.
Oh, yeah, pretty good.
Good guess. And-
Can we get approval?
What did you say? We can approve the date. We'll just move along and approve the date. So we're supposing this was, so she was, if this is, she died in eighteen seventy-nine and we think she was eighty-some years old?
Yeah.
And she used it as a playhouse?
Right, except that, and I think we even spoke about this. A lot of the style suggests that it may not have been built until eighteen forties, eighteen fifties?
It would certainly be my guess on the surface. Or the other thing that I was hypothesizing about is that the detailing on it-
Was renovated.
Is a renovated earlier structure. If she built it as a playhouse, one would assume she was little.
And there is some references in the historical record that she may have been a shorter person.
Right, right, right. Well, it's irrelevant to the significance of the building, so, but it, just out of curiosity. And I would point out, as is pointed out in the field, that if you look carefully at the elevations here, you'll see that the treatment on two sides is different than the treatment on the other two sides. So there are some idiosyncratic parts of this building that are significant, just in the fact that they're idiosyncratic.
So this building is small enough to be moved as a piece. So we'll probably stabilize it and then move it as a whole building down to the location on the road or whatever location is approved. Jim, how about-
Requiring archaeology in both locations.
So also, I note that, so Chris and Laura have engaged harking for archaeological investigation on the property. They've already begun the historical background search and anticipating fieldwork to be done by the second we've announced.
Okay, great. Thanks for the update.
Can I just ask, what's the thinking behind where you're going to put the playhouse down the driveway? Why did you choose that site? As a, maybe as an entry gate? Something to announce to the arrival that they're a historic place?
A bit of a folly along the road.
This is the barn.
This is the barn in the proposed color, not the existing color?
This is the existing color.
Okay.
So when you were there, it was painted?
Oh, yeah, this is, okay, okay.
Yeah, I was like, wait.
Yeah, don't try and confuse me, Larry. I can confuse myself, but-
It was, it was paint, it was, what color was it?
Yellow, green, yellow.
It was like a whitish green.
It's coming up.
Yeah, it's coming up later in the slides, I see. Okay.
Even me with my color blindness can tell the difference. It's now red or dark.
So I was on this property twenty years ago and it was red, the barn. And the fellow who's running Wilderstein, he wrote us a note recently and he said, "We're really glad to see the building returning to the color that it was." So I hope it's a non-issue. But what's good about it, if we went back to the house, the house is glorious, giant, almost four-story building. And this building and its whitish, yellowish color was kind of upstaging the building. So now, when you're at the house, and you look at, this is the view from the house. And this kind of pushed the whole barn into the background, as it undoubtedly was when Garrettson owned it. So this is the existing building. I believe it was built in three sections. I think this part was first, then the middle was constructed. And then more recently, this two-story family residence was built on the end. And that's, that's this piece. It's a little hard to see. Well, it's this piece also. So this eighteen and a half feet wide, fifty feet long, two stories high, that was added to house people who worked on the property. And I believe it was built particularly for the person who took care of the horses and drove the carriage for the family. And this is an English carriage barn, as far as we can tell. And the idea was, is the stables were down at the end, and we had a site visit on that. This was for the horses. This is that long wall on the opposite side of the building from this side. And then they built the carriage part, which is the middle. And then they built this residence at the end. And if you look at the foundation, the foundation here is more like a very old concrete. And then from this point up, it's stone. Dry-laced stone. Well, it isn't dry-laced anymore. It's all parched. This, it may not look like it, but this is concrete. Down here, this is stone. And then this is a different stone at the end. So I think it's built in several stages. And by the way, there's old footings in the ground. When I was there a while ago, there was a deck. That went from there to there and came out sixteen feet. We're proposing a deck and it's only about ten feet in this section. And this section is set back. And why don't we go to a floor plan and we can take a look? Oh, this, so this door, which kind of have nailed shut right now. This was the door that used to be the entrance to this residence. When I visited Oscar and Jim, we used this door, came out on the deck, and it was a staircase to the ground. So that's, that's gone now. Okay, Jim, thank you. So this is our proposal. It has, on the north end, facing Wilderstein, it has three garage doors and a personnel door. The personnel door would be the door that's a couple of feet away now. It was a horse door. We're moving that over. It's an entrance to the room. We're adding a little roof here now. Could we go to the floor plan for a second? So this is the existing area. And it's a little too short for cars. Certainly with, maybe a Land Rover that Chris wants to put in here. And there's no barrage on the property for how fabulous it is. There's no protection for the cars. So the idea was to move this wall a couple of feet down, about four feet, and to take these out and put in three garage doors on this space. Now, could we go to the current plan, existing, existing? So what happened was Melody, Dusty, came down and looked at the property. And they suggested, Melody suggested, that rather than relocate this antique wall, that we add five feet here, or four feet, or whatever it needs to, turned out five in most sense. So what we're doing is we are leaving this wall at its original location. And we're taking four of the six horse partitions, stole partitions. And we're placing one there, one there, one there, and one there. And the doors would be in place, so that would be the door, that would be the door now. So it's now, you could go back, Jim, to the renders, photographs.
And can we point out, Larry, that in the interior photographs, you're clearly showing what those partitions are now?
Yes, should we? You want to look at those first?
Well, I'd say let me look at them, but...
This is, it's a little hard to see, but this is, uh, the partitions. And we, you know, it has the regular horse stuff, it has the steel pieces. This is the example of the stalls, there are six of them. And we're going to keep four of them in this space, and then we're going to use the other two someplace in the decoration of the barn. So that stuff will be staying on site.
But you are altering the box stalls, correct?
We're taking the box stalls out, because the, uh, we need about ten feet for a car. So, looking at that other plan, uh...
I'm sorry, which are the box stalls?
The ones that are...
I think, I think there's, there's...
Yes, you're right, okay.
It's not, it's not quite clear in the floor plan?
Yeah, yeah, I see, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. Back on, back on...
They're the ones that are shaped like a box?
So, in this way, we can preserve a good deal of the existing north wall. And more importantly, we can, we can, uh, keep the wall that separates the horse stables from the, uh, main part of the barn.
Now, at some point, you'll be showing details of how, that has to be fire-rated, does it not, between where the cars will be and the other part of the barn?
Right.
Okay, so details on that will come along.
Okay, so let's go to, uh, the floor. So the floor plan preserves most of the stuff which is still. Really, the only difference is the north wall and the west wall. The north wall is getting the three garage doors and a very small covered porch, which is that. And the back wall, so, the back wall, the problem with this building is, it's dark, it's glazes inside. It's bad on the first floor, and it's worse in the attic. So what, uh, Laura, who's also a designer, what Laura came up with is the idea of having large windows to the west. Now, Jim, maybe you can bring up the west.
We're on the first floor still, Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
So, here's the west facade. Now, this is a facade that nobody can see unless they're standing in the woods on Chris and Laura's property. It's around the back, you can't see it from next door, the photos sort of show that. And this is where most of our changes are. So, this wall, and with the recommendation from Melody, this wall is staying exactly as it is now. This facade is almost exactly as it is, except we'd like to get two dormers there. There's a problem of both claustrophobia and safety and cross ventilation in this attic. So the building is a little under four thousand feet on the ground floor, and it's a little over two thousand feet on the second floor. And the reason for that is because the roof comes down in some places right to the plate. And on the second floor, it mostly comes down to the three-foot-tall sidewall, which is there. That's not usable space, it's not habitable by the code, and it's not usable, uh, to walk around in. So the idea is, and this came as a surprise, because we went up there with, uh, hardened wood, and we looked at the room. And everyone left there, we were looking at the room going, you know, there's no room up here to do anything. They, uh, the Heintzes want to put in a gym. So the solution for that was to put a shed dormer on the back of the building. And that shed dormer would have windows, the windows started at this high off the ground. And they're about three-and-a-half foot tall, that's what you see there. And they give us the headroom to make the second floor into a gym, which is their intended use. So, uh, here are the two big panels, which is a great solution, because they look, uh, just in the negative space, they look like big barn doors. Fireplace is new, it's got a firebox on each side, one for the deck and one for the inside room. And then on the second floor, it's this shed dormer. And the deck used to go, when I was there, from here to there. And we're extending the deck about another forty-four feet up in this direction. And it's really to provide relief to that room. Now, Jim, if you can give me my interior photos back for a second. So, can you blow any of these up?
Absolutely. Not left, I mean.
Which one?
Top left.
Top left, alright. So, this is what the lights, laces, these are not windows up here, this is some kind of reflection in the wood. This, this room is tremendously dark, there's no windows. This is in the stable at the far end. This is the, uh, center of that big room, and the fireplace would be right about here. And a, a ten-foot, uh, wide window with a French door, and it would be here. And a ten-foot-wide window here, they're about a little under ten feet tall, it's kind of a square, you see that on the rendering. Uh, and that will give us an opening to the outside. So it's, it's about eighteen hundred feet on this room, and it's, uh, it's great at nighttime. But in the daytime, it's ridiculous, because it's like a cave. This is the, uh, easterly wall of this room, there's a drake across there right now. Uh, this is the westerly wall, we're proposing the changes. Have you got any other relevant photos? This is, this is the south end of that room, this is the door that goes into the residential part of this end. This is the door going up into the garage, stable, well, it's a stable now. This is from inside the stable, looking into that big room. What else have you got, sir? Okay, now this, this is the kitchen up here. This is the kitchen that's in the residence. This is a rec room that's in front of that. So when you drive up to the building, you see the window here and the window there, these are the windows that face south. This is a bar that one of the past owners put in. This is the kitchen, which is part of that residence at the south end, and then we come to this area. So, on this planning board's last site visit, we all went up there and tried not to bump our heads. It's, uh, it's a very dark, tight space, there's no windows. And in the middle of the room is a giant truss. And that's why I believe this section was for the carriages, because the room is forty by forty, and you could turn a carriage around, bring a horse in, or take the horse around. And this remarkable truss, uh, is what allowed that big open floor. Here's, here's another picture of it down here. So this is a hay bough, this is over the stable part. And this is the big truss. So now, if we could go to the second...
Just for point of reference, the two, the, the sort of bar area and the renovated rooms area are the unpermitted changes that would be corrected through this process, is that right?
Uh, well, that was the kitchen. I'm, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, but I, I'm trying to get at what was done by the prior owners that were not permitted, that needed, and just for reference for the planning...
Yes, no, no, I'm, I'm trying to keep up. This was, I, I never saw this before, and as I said, I was there over twenty years ago. They built this out. This room has changed, but this was the kitchen and the dining room on the first floor. So this is not a change of use, and my understanding was, this was like a shop, this room.
Okay, but, but my point is, these are what are being corrected, as well as the, that funky bathroom on the first floor, right? There is a bathroom on the first floor, and that also was the taproom? What, what was formerly the taproom?
The, um, I'm not sure.
We, we don't, we don't know.
What it was.
We, we weren't, we only saw it when we...
No, no, I mean, we were on the site visit, it seemed pretty evident from the ghosting on the wall, that that had previously been a taproom. And we were presuming that that was converted without a permit by a prior owner.
Okay, well, it definitely was not there when I was there.
Okay, alright.
Since the last twenty years. So, here's the beam running down the center of the room. Now, Jim, if you could give us the second floor, because I just want to talk a little bit, so, this is the picture. This is about three feet, three inches to this beam. And this is the gigantic beam running through the middle of the room, from what we just saw in the other pictures. So, we can't get light air or usable space, because if you walk toward that wall, of course, you snipe your head. So the idea is to come in here and take some of these, uh, rafters and lift them up and set them on a wall of windows. Where the windows are going to start high, and what we're going to do to make it very nice and honor the old building is we're going to keep a little piece of roof, which, which might be shown on the rendering. The west, we have to kind of bounce back and forth. So, this, this is not the cheap way to do this. This, uh, we're, what we're doing in this picture is we're saving a little piece of the roof and pushing the windows back up the roof a little bit, so that that line still reads. Of course, the inexpensive way to do that would just be to blow that eagle of the, uh, building and have the wall come straight up to those windows. And the advantage for that would be that the windows could be longer, which would be very effective without the room, but it would not, uh, preserve the look of the building. So the idea is to just get what we need to make that space a gym. Okay, let's go to the second floor, and I'll wrap this part of it up. So, in this picture, we're showing the dormer from here to here. This is the gable, a tall gable that appears at the residential section. This is a gable also running this way, this, this gable runs this way, this gable runs this way. And in between is a gable like that. And that's when you look at the picture, you see the roof coming down onto this low beam. It's about three feet, three inches. So, in the middle of the room is the giant truss right here. And if you subtract the lower area from this room, you end up with about eight feet. So, kind of awkward, it'd be forty feet long and eight feet. So that's, that's why we're after this relief of the shed, and that really came into focus when you guys came down there, and you were all up there looking. How is this going to be used for this space? Okay, let's, so, I think that's everything about this, uh, about the plan. Let's just look at the comparison of existing to, okay, so, in this picture, this is the back of the building, I think someplace I have a picture of that. The slope goes down immediately from the building and starts headed down to the river. There must be, I don't know, more than a hundred and fifty feet, two hundred feet of, uh, elevation change from this building to, uh, the river. And we see that on the maps that Mark has, uh, given, that the topo lines are close together by this building, and they get really close together as you go down. It's not really, uh, a place that you can hardly walk around in. This is before, this is after, this is the south wall, this is after, these two were of course unchanged. This is the front of the building. And it's interesting how the painting of it red, I'm talking about it on site, has just made the building a lot less of an item on the landscape, which is suitable for a lovely house like that, to have a low-key building for the horses. This is the, uh, change on this facade is simply these two dormers.
And the shed roof?
Uh, oh yes, you mean up here.
No, I thought there was a shed roof over the entry door.
We took it out of your suggestion.
Okay.
So, there is a, a little shed roof up here, and I think it's good, because it kind of shows where that wall was expanded. So instead of moving the interior wall, we're building five feet of building to the north and putting in three garage doors. This is, uh, where most of the action takes place, you wouldn't even know this was happening when you drove onto the property. I'm out on the river frequently, maybe binoculars to see this building from there. It's, as you saw from Mark's map, it's almost a thousand feet from the river. So this is a facade that nobody sees. Okay, now, any other pictures in our submittal that need to be...
I think we've seen them all.
Okay, and I'll get out of the way.
Okay. Mark, is there anything else from the applicant?
Uh, just a couple, um, items. You know, I, I just some discussion with Jim about some of the details, uh, specifics with regard to the EAF. I, I just wanted to, you know, verify some things with regard to, uh, first of all, with regard to disturbance on the property. It is, my, uh, one point five acres is conservative, actually, we calculated today it's one point three acres. So we used one point five, so I think we're below that threshold for type one action. Same thing, uh, just provide, uh, Larry will provide some detail with regard to the floor areas for the barn, which I believe are, uh, within, uh, the allowable code requirements for this district when you consider the acreage of the property, the floor areas.
That was me, I'm just, just confirming that with the, with just calculations. I think this is a type two regardless, I don't think it's, it's not considered type one, it's a residential.
Okay.
Regret is, I don't think that's an issue there.
Okay, and then, um, also, I just wanted to, uh, you know, receive some comments from HAPAC. And so, I want to respectfully, uh, address those.
Let me just say at this point, um...
Actually, let me also say, excuse me for interrupting, that what questions you did get from the committee really came from trying to move from the purely observational visit that the committee made to trying to understand the changes that are being made now with regard to the application of the project, so...
I, I understand that, uh, HAPAC would give another look at this, but, uh, I guess one item that I'd like to discuss is a request for rendering impacted trees to be planted on the road. I, um, respectfully request that we do it with a field visit and to, uh, by staking out the...
I already, I passed that on to the committee.
Okay. So...
Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great.
The point I was going to make, Mark, is that the, we have not received anything yet from C A B, we're talking about that. HAPAC was preliminary, a follow-up site visit would produce their final thoughts. Their report form that would come to you.
Okay.
Um, when you're finished, I'm going to ask if either Kathy or Craig here want to make any comments just based on their site visits, as well as others from the planning board.
Uh, just for clarification, Craig, I, I received a phone call from Joe on your board.
Oh, Joe Pupia.
Yes, Joe.
Joe Pupia.
Oh, Joe Pupia, okay. And so, and Joe's done multiple site visits representing C A B with me.
Right.
And I did indicate that we'd probably be going back out there. And so I, I told him that I would let him know. Once again, I don't know, I just wanted to let you know that.
Sure, well, that's great, and if you could just, uh, include all of that, I think, you know, any of us would be, you know, willing to come along with him and, uh, just join in on that.
Yeah, I'll just coordinate everything through Gretchen, um, in, in the planning board. And, um... And, uh, and then the other items, you know, the memo that came through from HAPAC were a try to label existing and proposed conditions, and then also retaining of an archaeological consultant for project.
Great. Um, several of us, I, I'm going to defer any comments from my site visit. Delise, who were there, is there anything you'd like to offer at this time?
Um, I just have like a couple little questions. I think, I mean, just just effectively from what you're showing, I think that the dormers look very nice on the, on the entry side, and that the addition from moving the extra wall out makes a lot of sense. Um, just for the upstairs, so the truss, nothing happens to that in effect while adding a dormer. It's just that the, the idea is that the equipment, the gym equipment is on one side of that span, right? Because all the interior beams, all that's staying the same. You're just imagining that you're adding that window to create some head, headspace. There's no other changes.
That's correct.
Um, yeah, I think there was the last thing I was going to ask. But from the site plan visit, which I didn't get to fulfill the final piece of it, but getting to see the property, I mean, it's obviously a very exceptional and slightly complicated building for various reasons over the years. But is there going to be opportunity for the rest of the board to see this?
What we'll do is, um, I, I guess we'll coordinate through Gretchen. I, I would recommend opening up the second site visit to those folks who haven't had a chance to go.
Yeah.
Or folks who feel that, you know, they'd like a second look. Certainly, I know the C A B and HAPAC want that second look based on the new decisions that you've incorporated into the plan. There's no problem except for, and I, my recommendation is that we coordinate it so there's one more site visit. We don't need to have these poor people bothered by us coming back one by one. And so I think we'll work through Gretchen, get some possible dates, and work around that. And, and obviously, the sooner we can do that, the more expeditious it is. Craig, you were there. Is there anything you'd like to offer for the record, just observationally?
Uh, yeah, well, I, I just, I, I think it's important to bear in mind that this is a, a part of the National Register Historic District, and it's an exceptional property, and I think it would be worthy of individual designation if that were to be, you know, revisited. It, it's, it's really, uh, it, it's a phenomenal place, and I know that Chris and Laura really have developed an appreciation for what they have, and I would encourage them to further develop that, learn more about the property and its history and its significance, because it's, it's a real contribution to the historic fabric of this, of this town. And it's part of, and I know you appreciate that. It's part of what makes this a wonderful place. So, you know, I, I thank you for taking that, that time and, and, you know, those measures of care. But I, I would warrant some caution about, you know, the use of the terms preservation, because that's a technically defined term, and there are certain parameters that go with the preservation. If you were to refer to the Secretary of the Interior standards, it, it's distinguished from, and, and certain measures are distinct from rehabilitation. And, you know, some of the, uh, some of the aspects of what you'd call an adaptive reuse would be less preservation and more like a rehabilitation. So-
True.
You know, it's, I think we just have to exercise some care of the terms of use and move forward from there.
Okay, thanks. Um, it is a public hearing. I don't see a lot of public here, but if there is anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on this, now would be the time. Anything else from anybody? So Gretchen, we are continuing the public hearing. I would take a motion to do that to September seventh, at six forty-five, along with all the others. Could I have that motion?
So moved Sean.
So moved by Sean, second. Second, Joe. All those in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Thank you for the time you've invested in working on this project. I think we really appreciate that. It's taken a lot of thought and effort, so-
Thank you.
We'll see you, um, we'll see some of you again soon, and then we'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple coming up now. Um, I don't, the next agenda item is Justin McLeod.
Lyons.
Oh, Lyons, I'm sorry. Um, have we heard anything? Yes.
He just wants to know if she can get a conditional approval on it.
I don't think we have what we need, do we?
I beg your, what, what are we, you know where we're standing?
I've been in touch with Dave Pearson of the Health Department, and he's still waiting on the final of the plans for the septic system on Keith's, Keith's porch. Yes. So there's some question about the ability to do that on that harshly determined subdivision, whether there'd be sufficient ground, whatever, whatever the concerns are right now. Both the proper beach deal and these are- He says some question whether they're actually, or if it was feasible to do that. So he's just going to have our review to try and determine how that's going to happen. So that's really holding things up.
Yeah, we knew that. We were just wanting, we could stop being on your agenda all the time and-
Well, what the, the planning board can do is just, we can say, continue this for two months. Although it's a big tape, it comes to a great old date. And then once we have that, and it actually can be separated, so we actually can build a top replacement facility on there.
I think that's what Bertie's asking. I'm really not too sure.
Well, we could, we could always do an undetermined date assignment. We have to be re-notice, so.
Did Dave give you any indication of, is Dave still waiting for information before he can even start the review?
No, he started the review. He's just waiting to see what modifications can be made so that the subdivision that we've been proposed at this point can actually accommodate the septic system to be required for Keith's portion of the well, for Keith's house source.
Yeah, the existing house is a problem.
That's a problem. There's not a problem with it proposing a new one.
I'd like to recommend that we, um, we put this off to the October meeting. That way, we don't have to re-notice. How would that work out, Gretchen, in terms of scheduling? I know.
So far, we're clear on October four.
So great.
Who knows what's going to happen?
Is anybody on the planning board have any questions about what the issue is here?
I, I didn't catch what it was about. You want to say it?
It was an existing house, and it has, no, they can't get an approved plan for it yet. I don't know why they had to get an approved plan for an existing house to have a septic agreement. That answer I don't know.
Good questions with the septic being added.
And, and although the Health Department's approval has begun, they don't have the-
Right. They're still doing the review. There is no, the septic system is a kind of exist, is putting without any-
Right, but they're, they're basically in a new plan. I've seen the plan.
And apparently, there's still some issues with that.
Right, but I don't know what the issues are.
I don't either.
Well, if you don't know, you don't know, and Dave doesn't know.
I'm the last person to know.
Well, but you are the person here before us representing the project. So I, I would, I would make a motion to continue the public hearing to the October, what is, fourth? Uh, October fourth meeting at six forty-five P M.
I'll second that.
Uh, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
What does that mean to you?
It means that you come back on October fourth.
Hopefully.
And that you, and I would recommend that you or Marie be in touch with the Health Department and ensure that they have everything they need to be able to continue their review and-
Shouldn't the engineer be doing that? I mean, that's-
Well, if that's holding up, you might want to get up and show up.
Well, then you, you, you have two options. You can wait for the engineer to do it, or you can, you know, be proactive and get in touch with your engineer and find out what's holding that up. Um, but until Dave has more information and we have more information, I don't think we can proceed.
Yes.
And if it needs to be continued, she can always write in too. If she wants to continue it in October, because it's not ready, she can always just write us a note and say, hey, can we continue this? You don't have to show up.
Okay, cool. All right, next one.
Okay, take care. Okay, now I'm on to Justin McLeod. Some of them did the site visit to five thirty-one Old Wittenburg Road. You know that the applicant has stepped back and is looking at that application again. Uh, we don't have any updates or any new information. Am I correct on that, Gretchen?
Yeah, they asked to be continued.
So they have asked to be continued to September seventh at six forty-five. Um, could I have a motion to that?
I'm here.
Moved by Kathy, second.
Second, Joe.
Second, Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay.
I have a question about these extensions. Um, it's like, if somebody knows that they're not going to be ready, and then they write in that they want to be pushed back, do they have to give enough notice for us to refill that slot, or is it like the day before, and then we get all of these changes?
No, it'll just, the agenda will just shift. So basically, we look what we're doing now. They just won't be here to present it.
All right. Let, let me be clear, because it still is a public hearing, that there is no one here left in the audience wishing to comment on this. Okay, so we're, we're fine continuing. Uh, Rockledge is next up. We had what I consider to be a very good workshop meeting, which was open to the public, not for public comment, but for observation and education. And we were, it was essentially a workshop that allowed the planning board engineer to speak directly with, Seth is here representing, um, the, the Mark's business, uh, to answer the questions put forth by our engineer. And, um, I think as a result of that, we identified a number of questions that are still outstanding. And at the request of the applicant, um, we are going to be considering continuing this to October fourth at six forty-five P M. And again, I will ask if there's anyone from the public here, since it's a public hearing. You are representing a whole neighborhood, are you not, tonight? And, and the neighborhood is quiet. So, Victoria, is there anything you want to add? No. Okay, uh, so could I have a motion to continue the public hearing on Rockledge to October fourth? Delise, second.
Second.
Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? We're going to pass this. So, Jim, we have a Ruby sign application, and the last thing on the agenda is then the Z A referral. So I'll leave it to you to handle this part, if you would.
So Ruby's, um, this is not, this is not for, the project we're looking at in the office, this is actually for the court dealership. And they're looking to simply change the sign from, I think it's Ryan Beckford to Ruby's Ford. So they need a variance because of the- The, uh, the town code does not permit a sign, uh, the size of what Ruby's wants to propose. But what Ruby's is proposing is a seven square foot reduction from what currently exists today. So it is a reduction from what's up there today. Uh, they are looking for a variance to allow for the sign of a hundred and eighty-five square feet. And you can see here on the left, what is, a little bigger, what is there today? Ryan Beckford. And then on the right, essentially, what they're proposing for Ruby's Ford. So it is not, um, this is what the code is, why they need the variance, but it is smaller than what is there today.
By virtue of a shorter name.
It is.
So you have on page-
Is it not Grand Park?
It's not Grand Park.
It isn't.
He tried, but it's not Grand Park.
I would have.
I, I tried. I had to go to the C B A. I don't mean to interrupt, but I, I, I think there's, that, that's the overall. I do have details. It's, it's their final letters. I have some more details from the board last night.
Okay. Um, so on page twenty-three, you have a, a proposed resolution, which is one of the ones we normally make in this case, you know, asking the zoning board of appeals to use their own judgment on that. So I don't know that I need to read it. If you've all looked at it. Are there any questions of Mark or Jim? Any issues anybody sees that they want to raise? Could I have a motion to adopt the resolution on page twenty-three? Kathy, second. Kathy. Delise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Okay, the last thing that we have before us tonight is a referral. You know, we get some of these referrals with historic properties. This one was presented to us from the zoning administrator, not the acting zoning administrator now, but previously as a HAPAC referral. It should not have been sent to us at this point because we do not really have enough information to have what we would consider a complete application. It is indeed in the historic area on River Road, but we need much more information before we can decide where it goes. So I think we're just going to note that this should not have been referred to us, and that for purposes of deceiving should end the conversation, should it not?
Yes.
Okay, um, that being said, I'm the three people, so I-
You will not take my recommendations, so we will strike that.
What was your recommendation?
Well, I had a typical recommendation.
Oh, no, we're not taking-
But because we have found other issues, that one will be taken out, and I will just put reply back that it should not have been referred yet, and there are other things to look into.
And, and I think between you and Michael, you would, you will detail for-
Yes.
Is it Mr. Kane, or is that his first name?
That's his first name.
You will detail for Kane what we need to receive in terms of getting a complete answer.
Yeah, there's a question about the way the submission came through, so.
Okay. Okay, so could I have a motion to Jim? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you for your patience and forbearance. I know it was a long presentation on Wildercliff, but I think it's worth hearing everything, so. Thank you.